I opened the meeting for the City of University Heights City Council Meeting October 13, 2020. And the five councilor present and the first order of business is approval of minutes. And we'll do September 8 Council Meeting and the work session September 22. Those were sent to you. Are there any additions or corrections on either of these meetings? Hearing none, the minutes are approved by unanimous consent. Okay, the first order of business tonight is the public hearing. I call the public hearing to order. It's on a proposed amendment to the city zoning ordinance number 79 who permit the top floor of the hotel in the commercial hotel zone to be used as a conference slash meeting space in addition to a rooftop restaurant. Would anyone from the public like to speak? Please unmute the public and if anyone likes to speak, say they'd like to speak. Some people are still muted. I see. No. David Conrad's, he's muted. Mike Ritchie's muted.
Yep.
Pat Yegi's muted.
Okay, they can, they should be able to unmute themselves, right? Nope, they should be able to unmute themselves.
Thank you. I just want to make sure everyone who's present, if they want to speak, does this public hearing, they can speak. Okay, I close the public hearing. So then we'll have first consideration of ordinance 249 with the hotel. So Steve, would you want to start that? It's part of your report.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Not much to add to the report. As Greg Stiltna reported last month, the proposed operator, the rooftop restaurant withdrew in light of the pandemic and economic conditions. The present zoning ordinance says that everything above 65 feet basically means the sixth floor can only be used for a restaurant and certain enclosed are used for rooms. And so this just broadens slightly, the uses, it still can't be used for rooms, but it would permit the sixth floor to be used for conference and meeting space in addition to in addition to the restaurant.
Okay, could I have a motion on the table for discussion?
I'll make the motion, Louise.
Motion by Lisa, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Bobby. Okay, discussion.
Is this something that we are supposed to consider three times, Louise, or just once?
Free time, did you say?
Three, three times, or just once? Did you, T H R E E, three? Okay, so, so if we can consider collapsing this into one if there's no strong objections?
Well, I have a motion on the table for first consideration. We'd have to agree to undo that. Because you have to have the motion for collapsing before the first consideration.
Okay.
Maybe why don't we, what if we maybe do that this meeting and then next month, potentially collapse two and three?
That's fine with me.
Just because it's, I don't know if there's a hurry for the decision to be made.
Gives a little more time for the public to speak if they want.
Mm-hmm, true.
I guess if we're discussing it, basically Steve, the, what you, just to reiterate exactly what you said, I think is previously the zoning was such, it could only be a restaurant. Now we're just opening it up so it can be a restaurant or a conference center.
Yeah, that's right Bobby. And I gave you the history of my legal report. The reason evolution of it was originally it was only going to be five floors. And then they said six and the, and the council zoning commission said, well, six only if it's just a restaurant. You know, only the pandemic changed it from restaurant to, you know, possible conference meeting space. Yep.
But we could always go back to a restaurant in the future?
Yeah, that's right Doug. That would, it's, the restaurant is still a permitted use.
Any other discussion?
I think, I don't, I don't know what it's, for what it's worth. I mean, I, I think a restaurant would be fantastic. In ideal world, who wouldn't have liked to stick to the original plan? And it's unfortunate that. But if this is, you know, if this is what it comes to, then that's great, you know, I think. I think a conference center would be good. I think also just the buzz and excitement around a restaurant, I think is good for University Heights and stuff, but that is, is what it is, so.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, I can hear you Greg.
Um, can I, is it, is it okay if I speak or no?
Yes, you can Greg. Greg Stiltna is the developer.
Um, I have been working with my team, just so everyone knows, I've been working with my team. We just had a tasting where six of us interviewed a sous chef today. Actually, we had a taste day, which was amazing food. Um, we, the, the lower level restaurants, we are going to do everything in our a phenomenal place to come and eat and drink on the first floor restaurant. So I'm going to, Peter kind of challenged us a little bit. You know, he got a really good restaurant and we wanted to try to compete with him. So we, we went in the direction, and everybody has a mentality of making it a really great space and a really amazing place to eat and drink. So, um, I don't know if the size is, well, the size definitely here is big as the one on sixth floor, but I think, I hope that we're able to produce product, food product there that is amazing. Just an example, the sous chef today served us a plank steak that we all thought was, we almost said tenderloin, but it was so tender that it was actually, we thought, we thought it was sirloin, but it was, it was plank steak, which was wow, he's, he's really good. So we're excited to have him on board. And then as far as the future goes, the restaurant on the sixth floor is still always an option, so.
Anyone else like to speak, a council would like to speak, or are you ready to vote? Okay, this is a vote for first consideration of ordinance number four, 249, amending the zoning ordinance number 79. Roll call vote.
Roll call vote. Cook?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
Sullivan?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Swales?
Hi.
Carrie?
Thank you. Now we have public input time. This is the time that anyone can speak from the public. The max time is five minutes. You can speak on anything on the agenda, or you can speak anything about any other subject. Mike, have you arranged so that you can unmute them if someone would like to speak?
They have the ability to, public has the ability to unmute themselves right now if anyone would like to speak.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, this is Dave Conrad's. My wife and I just bought a house here on Cozer Avenue. Not sure if this is the time to speak, but it's regarding.
Yeah, Mike, David, could you give your address on Cozer?
Yeah, 49 Cozer Avenue.
Welcome to University Heights, Dave.
Thanks, good to be here. So, um, we, we were approached by one of the parents of the Iowa Hot Guys football team about, who apparently had till gated here in the past when the former owners had this and asked me if, because the parents will be allowed to go to football games, she asked if they would be able to, with other parents, use our yard again. And I said, well, and I went to our website here at University Heights and I didn't see anything that had changed. And now obviously I've learned that we have this resolution. So I did talk to one of the officers about the resolution and and I did share my concerns with the mayor about how the 10 person limit. I mean, I know that they can't park in the yard, but we have a pretty good sized driveway. If there are 10 people here, one of the things the officer brought up is, is he said, that includes my family. And I said, if we're in the house? He said, that's his interpretation, which I thought was a little messy because we don't know these families and we just are looking to serve them. So just wanted some clarity on, you know, before the resolution's approved, like what does that, what does that mean? And what can we do for the parents who are actually fans that will be allowed to go to the game?
Dave, can you stay on until we talk about it in, on the agenda?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak? You can unmute yourself if you'd like to speak. Okay, we'll go on to mayor's report. First business is consideration of resolution 2028 ratifying the mayor's appointment of Pete Damiano to the zoning commission. Pete Damiano is here tonight. Thank you for coming, Pete. Pete's a longtime resident of University Heights. I highly recommend him. And I asked Pete if he did come, if he'd like to share some of his experiences with the council, whatever he'd like to share.
Very good evening, everyone. Thank you, Louise. I appreciate the invitation to help with the city as, as a part of the zoning commission. I've lived in University Heights at 1470 Grand Avenue for 30 years, wife and two sons. And I also direct the University of Iowa Public Policy Center as my day job and I'm also on the faculty in the College of Dentistry and really just here to help serve and be of help if I can.
Thank you so much, Pete. Would council consider a motion to ratify the appointment of Pete?
I'll make the motion, Louise.
Okay, motion by Lisa. And did Casey say second?
I will say second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I heard your voice. Okay, second, discussion.
I'd like to say that I'm delighted that Pete has agreed to serve us and I very much support his appointment.
Thank you, Casey.
Okay, let's see, it's a resolution, so we have a roll call vote. Mike, would you roll call?
Roll call vote. Moore?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Swales? Cook?
Hi.
Sullivan?
Hi.
Carrie?
And thank you Pete for your willingness to serve and your appointment. You're filling the position of Stuart Rosebrook because he moved out of town and that will end in December of 2023. Thank you so much for your willingness to help. And you can stay on to the meeting or whatever you'd like.
Okay, thanks. I'll just turn off my video, but I'll stay on and listen. Thanks.
I have, I have a question, Louise.
Yes.
Are the planning zoning commissioners typically appointed for four years?
They're appointed for five years, but it's on a rotating basis so that we have one a year we have to replace. You know, like 20, 21, 23. So that's why he's filling in with Stuart's time instead of being five years. It's Stuart was reappointed and so he's serving out that term.
And typically it's, it's five years. Okay.
Thanks so much. We'll go to review of comprehensive plan update. Sarah Walz is here from the MPO. She is an associate transportation planner. You might remember Sarah coming in February and March and talking to you. I think it was February, March time. Anyway, there's been a few little additions and things and Sarah will, oh, there's Sarah. Hi, Sarah.
There I am.
Welcome. Go ahead and start, please. Thank you.
Thanks, Louise. I'll bring up a PowerPoint in just a second. But yeah, I think it was late February, early March and we were just at the beginning of the pandemic when we sort of got sidetracked and it seems like a long time ago. But I, I put together just a very brief PowerPoint just to kind of summarize. And I'm hoping, wait, just a second. I have to click share screen. Yeah, and here we go. I don't know if I can, I don't.
Sarah, I'm gonna, Sarah, I'm gonna make you the host temporarily.
Okay.
And you just, it, when you're done, if you just make me the host again, you should be able to do that. Okay?
Yeah, you'll have to walk me through that when I, when we get there, but okay.
So I just made you the host, so you should be able to go and share a screen right now.
Okay. I'm getting there. So, um, you know, I've had some conversations just as I was updating things for Louise. And the question that always comes up is what is a comprehensive plan? And different communities have slightly different definitions, but it's generally a vision and a set of goals and objectives intended to guide future decisions about investment and development. And so what you're looking at is a very general broad sense of goal, set of goals that are where you want to go, the plate, the place that you want to be, the conditions that you want for your community. The, there were some major goals in the plan that we were updating. And those were balancing owner occupied and rental housing, long-term and short-term housing is another way to think of it. And your council did go through some effort to limit the amount of rental housing. And we know that that got caught up with the legislature in Iowa and so you are where you are with that. Other communities are struggling with that same thing. Another goal was improving the financial viability of the community, increasing revenues or reducing costs. And you don't have a lot of areas where you can reduce costs. But the main thrust, I think of that from the previous plan was the improving the financial viability and you really needed additional revenues. And so since that time, you've had developed some rather large developments, the One University Place and now the hotel. And those are really adding to your revenues. You were sort of in a place previously where you couldn't think ahead of making improvements, investments in your infrastructure, things like that. And now you have some revenues coming in. Other goals were creating neighborhood destinations and community gathering spaces. Toward that goal, you have, you know, successfully developed the One University Place, which now has some businesses in it that I think meet some of those needs. And I think, I think generally a good part of the community feels like you have some places now where people can gather and meet. You also added in to that, you, the purchase of the Swisher Tract. So you now have, you know, an outdoor space where people can go hiking and, and enjoy the outdoors. Providing greater predictability as to where development or redevelopment would occur and the kinds of development to allow or encourage. Now, like I said, you've developed a couple of those big tracks. The only remaining large track is in, is in the university's possession, you know, the, where the former athletic club was. The, the Swisher Track obviously is not really a, an area that is, was appropriate for development, but you've purchased it and set it aside as open space. So kind of the big opportunities are off the table. And so that's a lot for a community of your size to do in a short amount of time. And then one of the other goals was improving pedestrian and bicycle safety and calming traffic on busy streets. And that is something that will, that sort of led to your community vision, visioning plan that, that looked at streets and sidewalks. So we were asked to update that, this, the previous plan. And so we've updated the demographic information, the financial information. We've reflected changes in land use and clarified where there might be opportunities for potential future development. I don't think the community is craving a lot of additional development. And there aren't, as I said, you know, your large tracks are gone. I don't think as a community you ever want to say no change is possible, but there's limited opportunity for change. We also gathered perspectives on current conditions, on how people perceive those. And I think those are pretty consistent with a variety of surveys and public input opportunities that you've had in the past. And then we identified some general goals for improvements and needs. So what the residents like about their neighborhoods, and I think this is very consistent over time. People like the safety of University Heights. They like the mature trees, the quiet residential character, mostly single family in nature. The walkability, as you know, a large percentage of your population walks to work and bikes to work and takes the bus. A mix of people at different stages of life. You've got young families, you have retired folks, you have university students and it, and it makes for an interesting mix. And then your mix of housing, you've got old and new and people seem to like that. What needs improvement? Again, sidewalks and streets, that's something that's really been delayed over time because at the time that you did your previous plan, you know, you just didn't have the revenue to make firm plans about that. There is some desire for increased street lighting, property maintenance and investment. People want to see, you know, the, the housing look like it's in good condition and maintain the property values in University Heights. A traffic calming, there's always concerns because you have a lot of traffic that comes through Melrose and on Sunset. You're sort of a pinch point for people coming into the west campus. And parking management is always a concern in University Heights. And then some things that are missing. Again, I think these are consistent over time. People want a distinct identity. A lot of people feel like when there should be something that announces that you've come to University Heights and that it's not a part of Iowa City or Corralville. A sense of place, again, some open spaces, maybe small spaces where people can meet and there might be something distinctive there, gathering spaces and opportunities to meet. So those are the things that people are sort of craving. And I think that some basic takeaways from the plan, you now have those anticipated revenues that you didn't have during the time of the plan. So you should be planning and budgeting on how best to use those. You're, you're, you're in that good place now. University Heights has long delayed maintenance of some of its infrastructure, streets and sidewalks. You, you can now plan to invest in those things. And those streets and sidewalks also provide one of the only opportunities you have for creating identity and sense of place. You don't have large open spaces and you're not going to have those other than the Swisher Track. And that has its own distinct challenges. So where, when people come to town, where are they going to see sort of that identity projected? And because it is such a walkable community, that's the place where a lot of new residents and old residents are going to, are going to run into each other is out on your streets and sidewalks. So the University Heights Community Vision Plan, which involved a lot of community input, is really more of your detailed roadmap about how to get to that place. So you, you had that plan, you didn't have sort of the revenue coming in to bring any of it to fruition. Now you can see that you have some revenue and so now it's time to use that plan and sort of guide you forward. And again, we touched on in the plan that there are limited opportunities for future development. Those opportunities should be evaluated for their potential to contribute more to walkability, sense of place and identity. So one of the things we talked in the plan is there might be some locations along Melrose that if somebody was able to bring together several parcels, there might be opportunity for some lower scale redevelopment. But that as you look at that, you should be looking to get out of that, you know, contributions to walkability, contributions to the streetscape, those kind of things. That, things like consolidation of curb cuts or the reduction of driveways, things like that, that, that make that corridor a little bit more pleasant for everyone, drivers, people who are walking, people are biking. So that's sort of what we have from the plan. I'll get out of my PowerPoint now. And Mike, if you want to tell me what I need to do to get you back as the host?
Add down you there, Sarah. If you click on the bottom of your screen now, you should see, you'll see a thing that says participants.
Okay, one sec. I am.
Might be easier if you stop sharing first, maybe.
Yeah.
So you can be able to see it more easily.
Right.
So where do I find that?
You see like the zoom kind of toolbar at the bottom, if you're in.
My screen, you guys shrunk down to a very tiny box. I don't know how that happened. Wait, let's see. I'm, I'm just not getting a toolbox at the bottom. I mean, the menu at the bottom.
At the bottom, do you see the blue like zoom? So kind of like.
The icon.
Yeah, the little blue. Again, your toolbar, do you see the blue? It looks like a video camera in white.
Try to walk you through it.
I just, I'm hitting make, make host.
There you go. Yeah, you just need to find the one that says University Heights and say make host.
Oop, here we go. Did that work?
Uh, not yet.
Okay, I'm gonna try it again. I'm clicking on it. Isn't that working?
I wonder, I wonder, Sarah, did you try to stop sharing your screen first?
Yeah, I think you might still be sharing your screen.
And how do I, let's see, let's click.
That's also down at the bottom.
Mine's up at the top, sorry.
Okay, yeah.
There we go.
There we go.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
That's good. Sarah, could you talk a little bit about what the comprehensive plan sets a, you know, general goals and aspirations? And it should be a, you know, you talked of it being a guide before. Could you talk about that a little more?
So I guess it's setting a very general vision. So that you, you, you can formulate more specific, I mean, the University Heights is a little bit, is unusual in that you're not a community that's going to be growing, you know, your, your perimeter is set. And so you don't have those sort of opportunities. And so a lot of the goals are very general in the sense of, you know, preserving the character, improving the streets. But then as you get toward those things, for example, if you were going to do the Swisher Tract, you know that you have these goals to create opportunities for people to meet, things like that. And so that allows you then to see something like the Swisher Tract as one of those opportunities. How you decide to, the amount of money that you would decide to spend on trails or the way that you would develop that park in general, you would develop it in a way that was accessible and, and, and inviting to the people of University Heights, but it doesn't tell you how to do that. And there may be opportunities that come in the future. If a piece of property, what, for whatever reason would present itself, you know, and somebody had an idea to create a gathering space, you, you have that goal in your plan that allows. So that's just one example. I think the more specific goal. I think the more specific goals, you know, behind improving your streets and sidewalks, that's a little bit more specific than, but then to the extent that you do it, the details of how you do that, I would draw that from, for example, your community visioning plan. If you didn't already have that plan, that might be a prompt to develop such a plan for something like that.
So it's a general guide and it doesn't dictate.
Right, so it's sort of, it's a vision that's saying, this is the kind of community that we want to be. These are generally the things that we want. And then as opportunities present themselves, you will look at those things in more detail, but you have the justification there to do something. If somebody just wanted to come down and just tear out all kinds of houses and build some, you know, 13 story building, you wouldn't find anything in your comprehensive plan that supports that. But you do, you know, there are, it does identify some opportunities where it might be appropriate as long as you've looked at it and it generally contributes to the walkability. It contributes to reducing, you know, conflicts along the sidewalk, things like that.
Thanks, Sarah. Does anyone have any questions before we talk about where we go from here?
I've got a couple.
Sarah, let me, can I just jump in for just a second, Casey? Sarah, you're still the host. So now, if you can click on your participant list. Oh, nope, I am the host now. You got me. Change back, thank you. Never mind.
All right.
Sarah, I went over the comprehensive plan pretty carefully. And there was a question in my mind, and I think I resolved it, but I'm not 100% sure. The comprehensive plan suggested a sidewalk on Emerald Street, you know, an eight foot wide sidewalks that leads down to Horn School. But I think that that area is controlled by Iowa City. In other words, they've got that, not only the street, but the right of way where the sidewalk would be. And I just wondered if, you know, if we don't control the land, would that make a difference in the, I assume that it would make it.
Yeah, that would make a difference. That would have probably come out of your community visiting plan.
Really, okay. So the other sidewalks, do they all, I mean, I'm thinking around Mahaska and Monroe and whatnot. Did that come from the comprehensive plan or the community vision plan?
It's supported by the comprehensive plan, but it came out of the community visioning plan.
Is that right? Okay, and we have a bike lane on the south side of Melrose Street that pretty much, you know, goes for the length of the street, but we allow parking in that. So it kind of defeats the purpose of it. Is, what are your thoughts on that? I mean, it seems like we could, you know, get a heck of a lot more functional utility out of that bike lane if we just prohibited parking there.
Well, I think it's actually a parking lane. I don't think it is a bike lane.
Is that right? But if it was, we defined it as a bike lane, it could serve that purpose as long as we didn't have those three cars or two cars or one car in the parking there.
Right.
Okay, was it set up as parking initially in order to calm traffic? Or is there a reason for that?
I'm assuming it was set up as parking because the property owners of those properties wanted on-street parking. I mean, to be fair, it is a long street frontage with few breaks. So I'm going to assume that those folks along that part of Melrose had a desire for parking.
But that may not be the case. And if, so for bicyclists, I guess 49% of the people here in University Heights commute by bicycle. And it could be that their preference would be to use that as a bike lane. That is to be just as likely as.
Right, you might, you know, you would, yes.
Okay, and the last thing I wondered about, there's an undeveloped lot that was, they talked about developing it for a Kinnick Stadium kind of house. It's at Highland Avenue, right at the bend there. And we had a complaint recently that since 2014, the property owners next door have expressed some concern about what was a temporary fence and it's kind of ramshackle. And we always have to call the guy to trim the weeds and it's an ongoing irritation. And I think that, given the fact that University Heights, and again, I might be wrong about this, but their payments for parkland and recreation and such have been very limited over the years. And I think that being landlocked has a lot to do with that. But it seems to me that, you know, we're dealing with the Black Lives Matters thing. We've had a couple of meetings, well, one meeting. And it seems to me that that might be a reasonable acquisition by the university, you know, to one, expand its recreational opportunities. Two, to commemorate that Black lives do indeed matter for this community. And three, provide the kind of gathering space that we're looking for. Do you have any thoughts on that?
That specific property, no.
Okay, and the last question is, on the Swisher Track, we bought that, I think, in 2017. Was it 2018, Louise? 2018, so we've had it for two years. And it's right at the north end of Sunset Street there for about 600 feet. It's a pretty gradual slope, but there is no access there for wheelchairs, strollers, walkers, people with disabilities. And I'm wondering, is that the kind of thing that you'd be thinking of as gathering places that might serve a purpose for the university?
Are you asking me?
Yep.
I am not familiar enough with the Swisher Track. I mean, I know that there is at the top of Sunset, there is some level space. So that would be for your consideration.
All right.
Either of those, well, the Swisher Track you have in your possession.
Yeah.
Certain advantages. It is in an area like on the south end of your town. You do, you are able to take advantage of a park that's technically, well, literally in Iowa City, but it borders University Heights. So you have a neighborhood park there that I think most people in that part of University Heights are able to make use of. But it's not for me to say that that is the park that will satisfy your needs. You would have to look at that and what it takes to develop. And you would have to, you know, factor in the neighborhood and the accessibility and all of those kinds of things. But, but yeah, that is a space that gives people an opportunity to meet. Is it going to be the type of park that you're going to have to be able to have larger gatherings in or the types of gatherings that University Heights residents are craving? That's something you would have to decide.
All right, but that might fit the profile as far as you're concerned.
Sure.
And would you advocate as a planner that we should have a plan? And actually, what we've been spending the last 10 months on is considering our priorities and establishing a capital budgets, capital improvements budget. Is it just wise in terms of running a city to have some sort of a process that you all agree on rather than extemporaneously deciding, you know, exactly what opportunities there are? They should be within the framework of a plan? Is that, do you generally feel that way?
I think, I think that's what the comprehensive plan calls for. One of the goals in it talks about you guys having a strategic plan and a budget. So it would look at what are the things that you want to achieve within a five-year period and how you will pay for those things.
Great, thanks very much.
Sarah, can we talk a little bit about moving forward with this? Because I think it's been on the website, we've gotten some input. We've been doing this through the pandemic, which slowed things down. And I think we can move forward with adoption, maybe in November. At least we could, or December of this year. I'd like to finish it this year. Do you think that's possible, Sarah?
Well, you guys would really be the deciding factor on that. And I don't know if Steve has anything to say in terms of whether in University Heights, whether this has to go through your planning and zoning. I'm not sure where you are with that. But I would say that I think it shouldn't, I wouldn't think it would take you long to pass it because I don't feel like this comprehensive plan is, in terms of public support, is not contemplating huge changes. You may.
Review and not an overhaul, right?
Right, right. And I think, you know, kind of the big items, you guys have accomplished those. In terms of, we all know that one university place was a major development for a community of this size. And the same thing with the hotel. And that took those two big parcels off the, you know, off the development potential list. And the university is going to do something with its property. And so that's really, after that, I think it's, I think the focus is really more on maintaining and investing in what you have. And like I've said to you, Louise, University Heights isn't like surrounding communities where you're dealing with, you know, you have to fund for sewage treatment facility, a water facility. You don't have huge parks and recreation department. You don't have a library, you don't have a lot of those other things. What you have is, you know, sort of the basic infrastructure of streets and sidewalks. And then these, you know, some small opportunities to do some small parks or trails, but you don't have all of those other great big projects and facilities to maintain.
One last follow-up question, and I'm sorry, Louise, to spend some more time. Sarah, you're aware that we're not going to receive a full assessment on the hotel for 18 months after January 1st? And that generally, that one-sixth of the budget for the hotel motel tax goes to the Convention and Visitors Bureau? And that the OUP could come online in 2028. So it'll be eight years out. And then the contraindication is that we're only using 10% of our bonding capacity and rates are at historic lows, and so we have access to those funds. Is that, okay?
Those are really, those decisions though, you know, bonding and stuff, that's really for our council to make that decision. And you look at your time, you know, your time horizon and what the economy is telling you and the health of your community, and you make those decisions in sort of real time.
Thanks, makes sense.
Steve, Sarah mentioned you. I wasn't thinking this would go through planning and zoning. It was a revision and not a whole overhaul of the comprehensive plan. Do you have thoughts on that?
The code does not, the Iowa law does not require the council to submit a revision such as this to the zoning commission. Of course, the council always has the prerogative to do that if it would like, but there's no requirement.
Back in, I'm thinking when we had a planning and zoning meeting was maybe early summer, late spring. And I had the zoning commission review it and look at it informally. And people made private comments, but nothing, you know, I didn't formally do it and have them look at it as a group, just informally individuals. Two people made comments, and that's part of it. And so I was thinking that the council would go ahead and adopt it rather than going through planning and zoning. But as Steve said, it is a council decision to do that. And I think with this revision, that it's not necessary. But does anyone have any feelings about that? How about we put it on the agenda for November? It's been on the, and then it's been on the website all this time. We can send it out again individually, but everyone can look at it on the website. And then as part of the adoption, I mean, you went through this process before with me, Sarah. What type of a vote do we need? And maybe that's a Steve question.
I think that's for Steve.
Well, I was going to say it's for Sarah, so no. To adopt the plan, we just take a majority vote, three votes.
Thank you. And so we'll put it on the agenda for November meeting and see if council, after they've looked at it again, see if they're ready to review or not and adopt, okay?
That sounds good, Louise.
Thanks so much, Sarah, for coming again. We really appreciate it. And if anyone has questions, it's okay to email you, correct?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Bye-bye. So let's see, Greg is here. Greg Steltner is still here. And the next order of business is hotel update. And Greg, if you unmute yourself, you can tell us what's going on, including the food at the hotel.
Well, right now, we're getting all the concrete poured on the outside of the building. We're trying to button up the exterior complete before it gets cold. We just started landscaping this week. A lot of, you'll see a lot of landscaping and a lot of concrete being finished up this week. So hopefully before, you know, the first football game, we're really close to 100% on the exterior landscaping and concrete, I'm hoping anyway. But interior-wise, we just got the bar area restaurant where the, you know, the bar areas set as far as what it's going to look like as far as length and such. But just a lot of stuff going on, first floor drywall. There's a lot of action going on the first floor right now. Fifth floor, we're putting in furniture. Fourth floor, we're putting in flooring. And then third floor, I think they're putting on wallpaper. So that's kind of where, well, third floor is putting on flooring too. So, and then as far as the restaurant goes, yeah, I'm just really excited. We're putting a lot of effort. I think my team really understands how much of a foodie I am at this point. So they're really putting a lot of effort and energy into my vision, so.
You're talking the first floor, right?
Yep, the first restaurant, yep.
Okay, are there any questions for Greg?
I have to say that Greg, I'm a little disappointed that you didn't bring the leftovers from the tasting into the council meeting, but I'm just going to have to explain.
Oh, yeah. Well, I tell you, you guys are going to be, you know, I'm pretty sure we're hiring this guy, but he made a crab cake today that was apparently in 2013, it was the best of Iowa City. And then I think 2014, it was second place. But this crab cake you made today was unbelievable. Best I've had, it was crazy. But yeah, but really good about him is he's really, he's really open to customer service. I asked him what his passion was, and his passion is customer service. It really wasn't to be the best chef in the world, it was customer service. So when we're over there. when we're over there and we want something different or special, he said he, he wants to give the customer what they want, more than anything, so that's, that's huge. And, and, and he was open to ideas and anything we want to bring to him for ideas. He's not like this guy, everything has to be his way or the highway, so we're really excited to have him on board, he's got a phenomenal resume. We, you know, with all the restaurants closing down these days, we just, we're getting some really good opportunities to get some really good people. Just hope we can keep them, so.
Greg, when are you expecting to open? Can you say that date?
Right now, we wanted, you know, really pushing for the end of November, I think it's, you know, after some setbacks with the vinyl wallpaper, and I think some of the tile on the outside of the building, it'll be first part of December. But I'm pushing every day, I'm over there pushing every day hard as I can, so.
Okay, any other questions? I could talk about the food too forever, but thank you, Greg, very much.
You bet, take care.
Take care, yeah. So then we'll go to legal report. Steve, now we're gonna talk about consideration of Resolution 2020 concerning tailgating and related activities on UI football game days. And Steve, do you want to talk a little, I know you said it in your report, but for the public who didn't see it, maybe you could just review a little?
You bet, I'm happy to, thank you, Louise. So back in a, oh, I guess July and August timeframe, when we thought we were gonna start playing football at Kinnick Stadium in August, there was discussion about what that would look like in the surrounding areas, certainly including University Heights. And Chief Kelce and Louise and I and some others, the three of us met or talked by phone, I guess, a couple of times, and some other people had input, I know, into some possible restrictions or provisions that might address tailgating as it typically occurs in light, in light of the pandemic. I had an assistant in my office, I do a survey of different universities and cities like Ames and Stillwater and Tuscaloosa the usual suspects, you might say, to see what other cities and other universities were doing. Back at that time locally, if I, if I recall correctly, the university was saying, even in that timeframe, that, that they probably were not gonna allow any parking in lots surrounding Kinnick Stadium, and that they wouldn't allow vending on any of the university controlled areas. The city of Iowa City had said that it was not gonna allow vending up and down Melrose Avenue as it usually does. And then as things were coming together, in fact, I believe it was our August meeting, I, I, there was an agenda item for a resolution, but, but the Big Ten football season got canceled for the fall of 2020. And so this was sort of put to, put this, put aside for a couple of months, and, and then the Big Ten said that they were gonna play again. I'm sure you all know those, those details. But the pandemic remains with us, things have happened since August that have caught the eye of the mayor and the chief of police, among others. The Johnson County now has a mask ordinance. There have been various declarations and revised declarations by the governor of the state of Iowa, Governor Reynolds. And so Ordinance 2020 represents an effort by the council frankly, to discourage you know, any sort of large-scale tailgating. To slight repeat of what I said, you know, now that the, that the football season is gonna start on October twenty-four, even though there's not a home game for us that day, the university has said that it will not allow tailgating or parking in its parking lots. Vending is not going to happen, the city of Iowa City has said that vending on Melrose Avenue is not going to happen. For, so for, at least from my, my standpoint, everything we've been able to see, for all intents and purposes, the, the game day atmosphere around Kinnick Stadium is, is going to be anything but. It, it just, there just isn't gonna be any, by rule and, and by decision. And so that left University Heights as, as its own authority to say, well, what are, what are we gonna do in our community? And so, again, Chief Kelce, the mayor and I had discussions and worked through some ideas about you know, different, different notions. Should we just, should the city just prohibit parking on yards or limit quantities and numbers? And certainly Chief Kelce was was an important voice from, from an enforcement standpoint. How, how are we gonna, gonna do this or that? So, so in my view, what, what Resolution 2020 does, as I said a minute ago, is it, it just strongly discourages anything that would be seen as a large-scale tailgating. Louise had talked already with Paul Moore in our, in our business district, and Paul said that he was not, he was not going to permit any outside vending along his building, which is obviously changed from the past, so the rest of the city, most vending is, is prohibited anyway. But this ordinance says there can't be any, any outdoor vending. It says that you can't park on yards. It limits gatherings to ten or more, ten or fewer people. It, it, it requires adherents or following the county mask ordinance. It, it, it encourages and directs people to socially distance. I won't go through every detail, but, but generally, that's what the ordinance says. It also does say that, that the usual restrictions on parking on streets will be in, in effect. So that was an effort to say if the council elects to enact such a restriction on yards, you can't park on yards like normal, that people don't just say, well, fine, I'll just park in the street and we'll come over to the yard. So the street parking restrictions will be in effect. I guess there's been some mixed, perhaps, mixed feedback. I don't know if that's a fair statement, there have been at least a couple of inquiries from people about what's the tailgating rules gonna be. And the reason I mention that is I think there was a question among the three of us at least, and you know, what are, what are people going to be wanting to do? It's, it's going to be late October before we even get going, and that could mean different things in terms of weather, and it's not as though the atmosphere of the stadium or the sound of the stadium is gonna be going on, so are people really gonna wanna tailgate anyway? And, and I don't know if anyone knows the answer to that, but, but this is an effort to maybe get out in front of the issue a little bit for the council to pass some restrictions and communicate to the, to the community what the council's expectations are for game day activities, and certainly they are much, much different than normal.
Troy, did you want to say some things about your take on it, because you're gonna be the, the police enforcement or visit with people as we move forward? If we move forward with this resolution?
Yes, please, thank you. I will rehash what all our conversations are. Like Steve, I have also had a number of conversations with community members or at least property owners in the community that you know, we are in what would already typically be the season, and we are now just getting back to this discussion because the Big Ten canceled football. This is primarily driven, I assure them that this conversation is primarily driven by community safety, both our residents and the visitors to our community, and while there might be different levels of comfort with COVID, because that's really what we're talking about, while there might be different levels of comfort with COVID or, or mingling with either family members or acquaintances or strangers, the lack of consistent messaging is one of the things that, at least in my opinion, has contributed with some of the issues about our community and other communities addressing COVID and the COVID response, when you have you know, different towns or, or different government entities or different political parties, whatever the case may be, having various and sometimes very disparate approaches to things, it, it sends mixed messages. Our discussion, the mayor and Steve and my discussion kind of tried to dovetail with what Johnson County was doing, what the state of Iowa was doing, what the University of Iowa was doing, and what Iowa City was doing, and we all want the same things. We all want to be able to enjoy football safely and responsibly, and we want to protect our community and our guests. In part for that consistent of messaging, again, Paul, Paul Moore is the only one who does any commercial vending, if you will, along Melrose Avenue, and my discussions with Paul, Paul had said he was not planning on having any vendors. Yet rather than it be a case-by-case, property-by-property, renter or owner-by-owner decision, we decided among ourselves, and, and I feel strongly with this, that it should be, it should be a community response, it should be a city response, and we should set clear guidelines and we should set clear expectation. To that end, I agree with everything that Steve said, this is not meant to squash enjoying football, this is meant to protect our community and our guests, and I think this is a good balance. I think that it's important to address it now, rather than wait for the first football game and see how that plays out. As Steve wrote the ordinance or wrote the, the document, it, it clearly states on there that you have a a long storied tradition about Iowa football. We want to try to do it safely, and this is potentially a starting point, if it works well, great, if it doesn't, we will revisit it. So I, I'm not going to be heavy-handed in enforcement, I can assure you that. This is about education, it makes it easier for me and my officers to do that education and to gain voluntary compliance when we are being consistent with what is happening across the bridge in Iowa City and on University of Iowa property. I think, I think this is a good compromise, and I think I think this will reach or accomplish all of our goals. To that end, I have had a number of inquiries from a variety of people, and I promised that I would pass on some items. Paul Terhar owns a vacant lot kind of down on Melrose, just east of Tim Lehman's property and just west of Paul Moore's property. Paul or his family have parked vehicles on that lot, it sounds like, for decades. There is no home on that lot, there is no paved driveway, there is a gravel drive that runs from the streets to a kind of a larger gravel area in the back of the lot. Paul or someone on his behalf typically parks vehicles all over that lot, so dealing with Paul or in his, or his intermediaries, and his interest would be allowed, did he be allowed to park vehicles? I have been assured by, in my conversations, that he will abide by council decision, but he wanted, he said in his own words that he's computer illiterate, and he asked me to pass along I his concern. I believe it's item seven, but I do not have the proposal in front of me, Steve, I think it's the one that talks about it might be no more than ten people, or it says something about except for household members or something, I'm not sure exactly how it reads. Am I referencing that right? Can you pull that up? I can't, Steve?
Yeah, I'm
I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me. I think it's item seven in your enumerated list at the bottom.
Yeah, it says that individuals gathered on private property shall remain physically distanced to six feet unless, unless they live together.
And I was asked about specifically, well, what about family members? And I promised that I would bring that up for discussion. Again, I don't know that people are frustrated with the proposal at all, so much as they're frustrated with COVID. And again, I think it's important that we give clear direction and clear expectation. This particular individual asked that potentially families be added there in you know, and or families, or however you would put it, and pointed out that my words, a germ unit, families might be intermingling already, that they might not be household members. So I'll use the example that was previously brought up about by one of the residents where a football player's family may want to come and gather and then go on to the game because they are allowed to do so, yet there may be ten people hypothetically in that family that don't all reside together. So that was, that was this only, that was this individual's, one of his points. But I will be glad to entertain any questions, I think that it is very workable. I don't see a need for enforcement. There was a concern, the way that it was written, again, this is the first time that it's been openly discussed, but the way that it was written that if there were issues at the city, or maybe me, the police department would take action against the property owners rather than the tenants or the persons at the property or control the property. And while the proposal does say residents or property owners, I fully intend to, to address this like I would any loud party call or any nuisance property call, and I will deal with the people that are on the property and are, in my opinion, responsible for the gathering. And again, I, I am confident that maybe with some frustration, but I am confident that I can gain voluntary.
Uh, thank you, Troy, I want to say a few words that I, when we were working through this and thinking about it, I went and talked to people, I don't want to say their names, but I talked to people who are known tailgates, and I talked to somebody on LEMR, I talked to three people on various areas of Highland, I talked to people on Mel, uh, uh, somebody on Melrose, and I got a very positive response. These are, are you kidding, Louise? We're not gonna tailgate, we're not even gonna be here. Or they'd say, why would we be here? There's no fans, we're gonna be at our house tailgating. Or, so I got very positive responses from people that they weren't planning on it anyway, because they'll watch it in the comfort of their home on TV, and why would they come here? But since then, I've heard from people like Dave, who just spoke at Public Input and said he wants to park, you know, the player's family. And you know, of course, we have spaces on driveways and in my, in, in the west side of Sunset, we have parking on one side of the street. People could park on my street in front of my house and you know, walk somewhere if they want, or sit in the car or whatever, I, you know, but as far as somebody like a football player's family has to go to the game, they can park and then walk to the game. But anyway, I got very positive responses, and I wanted to say that. So, does the council have? I know you've reviewed it. You have some thoughts, and what are we gonna do to answer some of these questions? And work some of these things out? I think Troy has a good handle on it, like he said. And he, he can explain, and I think we need to talk to more people depending on what happens tonight. I plan on contacting a lot more people and talking to them and telling them what the council decided tonight.
I, I guess I have a question. Tell me, Troy, or, or Louise, I guess, whoever. I understand the, and maybe, well, let me think through this here, I'm trying to, I'm really, this is what I'm wrestling with, I'm trying to figure out what's, what I think about it. Is this, is it just primarily because we might have people coming from out of town and different locations that we're really kind of putting our foot down and saying, you know, we want to do what we can to prevent the spread of this? Or because, is it different than, you know, for instance, Maggie's? You know, I know there's a lot more than ten people outside of Maggie's sitting relatively close proximity, and, and then you think about the cars where they're parking, you know, around the back, they're all really close, I'm just, I just don't, I wonder if it's gonna be an issue necessarily. And I'm not, you know, I'm not saying this just because I have people park on my yard and make money doing it, I, it's really, I don't plan on making any money this year from an actually- Saying this just because I have people park on my yard and make money doing it, I, it's really, I don't plan on making any money this year from it actually, but. I'm just trying to think through how it's different in that way, maybe Troy, you can, or.
Hey Louise. Yeah.
Case by case basis, right, Troy, like?
Yes, and as far as the difference between this and a commercial like Maggie's, for example. That's fair, and they are apples and oranges, Maggie's is a commercial property, it's, it's zoned in a commercial area and. They are subject to certain restrictions, not just community restrictions, but health department restrictions, they want to stay open, I mean, there's. Restrictions as far as, and they impose some of them, and they have both liquor license and really a license to serve. As far as they can require their guests to, what, you have to have a mask on, except when you're seated at your table. They do, you're right, there is, there is, is a mingling in there. But they don't have, they're not in a residential neighborhood, a. I agree, it's a fair comparison, you know, at the same time, I think it's an apples and oranges. About both protecting the guests, and it is an intermingling of people that. Travel probably not just from the community, not just from Johnson County, not just from the state of Iowa, but from all across the country. Even if they're just players' families coming. We were a very successful team and we recruit from across the country. So you have those. Really potential. Events, if you will, I mean, really, that's. That's in part in the discussions that Steve and I had is, is we don't want to be as a community identified as, as.
Part of the problem, right?
Exactly, exactly, so this is an effort and it's, and it's, it is an attempt to balance all of those interests and to allow. You know, what if, if there is going to be somebody that comes and if they do have it and, and. Either are symptomatic and are avoiding that or disguising that or not paying any attention to it, or non symptomatic, if they are spreading it. Hopefully, this means they are spreading it at most any more than nine other persons in university heights and. By statistics, they shouldn't be spreading it to everybody that they have contact with. But whatever percentage you say they're going to spread it with, if they're only dealing with nine people instead of. 50 people, uh, as far as that close contact, at least in university heights and. Yes, it protects our residents and it protects the larger community, and that's, it truly is a balance, uh, and. It's, it's less than ideal, uh, it's, I'm. This is what we came up with, and I, I'll make whatever you give me work, or if you, if you say, you know what, let's just roll the dice and see what happens, that's okay too. I think if you're responsible not to at least discuss it. Let alone take action.
It's a very good question you have, Bobby, I don't know if people will come from out of town, I don't.
Yeah, I, I can save all the, I mean, most of the parkers that are, that are, that are lot or our yard have season passes and none of them are coming. So, or at least none of them have told me they are anyway, so I don't, I don't really anticipate having anyone, but. But I guess my thoughts, I'm, yeah, I mean, I, I wonder if we can. Do both in the sense of, I mean, I really liked what Louise, we did earlier with the proclamation notes, like. Here's our stance on it, we want people to be responsible, and we want people to wear masks and. Like, but I don't know, for whatever reason, telling people that they can't park cars on their yard seems like a little bit. I don't know what the word is, it's, I don't know if it's restrictive or like.
Overreach?
Well, we. Overreach, I mean, maybe, but.
The other seven, you know, only seven days they can, we tell them that the rest of the year, if they can't park. They can't park cars on, on, only on game days.
Right, yeah, so, yeah.
Does that make a difference? We tell them that for the other hundred and, you know, my math isn't good, but you know, the, whatever.
Yeah, 349.
Sorry to interrupt, but the other things that was brought up, for example, and both in our discussion and also discussions that I've had with people that have called to me about this. Is, for example, the limit of 10 people. That is not an arbitrary number, I mean, it isn't, it isn't, that is a number that is. It is frequently discussed that there shouldn't be gatherings of more than 10 people, some locations accommodate. More than one group of 10 people, or many, there are many yards that would probably accommodate more than. People, but we're also, one of the goals was to try to make this. Not subjective, you know, not for me to have to come down and say, well, I think this lot. Can accommodate, there's, look, you have a total of 40 people, but they're divided up into four different groups and that looks okay. Well, how come we can't do this over here? Well, you could have if we'd have parked cars differently, so I mean, there, there might be some room to adapt it there, but. It is a minimum number and it is. It is restrictive, it is restrictive, and I don't know that it's the right answer, but. That was one of the things that was discussed too, is what number do you restrict, and do you say if it's, is it per property, is it, uh? Side, is if they have 10 people outside and they are watching a TV that's out on the back porch, yet there's more people in the house, is that okay? You know, from my perspective, I think there probably is, we will respond to any COVID complaint that we get. About any unsafe gathering or unmasked people, and we will both, we will try to educate both the people that call. Because frankly, most of the time, those calls that we receive. The caller is potentially wrong, and you know, the person who's walking by themselves on the sidewalk doesn't need to wear a mask. By the nature of their socially distancing, so we'll try to educate all persons involved, but there are reasons that we pick these things, and it is restrictive. But it's also meant to be simple to communicate what the concept is and what the expectations are. And that consistency of messaging and that simplicity and, and say what expectations. So that's how we came up with it.
Yeah.
Well, I can see the difference between a, a commercial and a private property where. Uh, a commercial property, you have a reasonable expectation of following, uh, healthy guidelines where you, you don't know. Uh, whether somebody is asymptomatic or not. I, I guess, my issue is this, this does seem like. I've had people tell me this looks like an overreach of power and kind of an infringement on people's rights on their own private property. And, and I've always been the believer of, um, you have the right to do anything on your own privately owned property unless it affects somebody else. Now, using that as a template, I don't see how it affects anybody unless. Somebody's running around licking their neighbor's doorknobs and car handles on their car, I, I don't know. What that could possibly look like, but if the federal government can't even enforce masks, or the state of Iowa cannot enforce masks. Or the county can't even enforce masks, I mean, as a small little city, how can we mandate social gatherings on private property? I mean, that, that's, that's kind of a hard thing to explain to people. Private property, yes, private property, I don't know, I, I get a lot of people giving me pushback on that. And, uh, and on the other thing you gotta think about, it does affect. Uh, businesses here in Iowa City that depend on any sports activities, any sports related. Gatherings, uh, whether it's in your backyard, front yard, I mean, even my daughter drives for chomp and makes, you know, a couple hundred bucks a night, you know, driving chomp, so. Um, anything that you take away is also gonna have an economic impact. And, uh. I, I think people are grown up enough that they, they surely have been, I mean, this has been going on since March, I would like to think people are smart enough, if they're gonna wear a mask. They're gonna wear a mask, and if they're not, you know, what do you do with that? And we can't even enforce it on a, a federal, state, county, I mean, it'd be awful hard to enforce it on a, a local level, if, if you know what I mean, so. I guess that's the challenges that I have in my head and, uh. Not parking in our yards, I guess. Your own private yard, I guess, I, I guess I don't see a problem parking in my yard during the hours of game as if the game were going on, but. Again, with the weather, like you say, it's getting cold. I mean, we're only gonna have just a couple games anyway, and it's, by then it'll be snowing anyway, so I really don't think it's even gonna be a problem. And I'm wondering if we're trying to fix something that's not even broke here, so, but I appreciate trying to get ahead of it, but I just don't think it's gonna be a problem.
And I, I agree, I, I hope, I hope, and I would bet that it's exactly how Doug says, that this will not be an issue. Uh, this is just an effort to have a tool to address it. Most of the people that I have, have spoken with have been honest, and really, when it comes down to it, there is an economic component for all of them. Probably everybody but one, and that was, again, a, a football player's family, probably no economic error, that is just. You an interest, come and enjoy the game and watch their fun play, everybody else. Has been impacted by this, and, and if they do live in university heights and park vehicles there. Whether it's fun money for Christmas, or whether it's to. Cash flow that they count on this time of year, it, there is that financial impact, I mean, that's, that is part of the people that compete. The things, one of the things that people communicate to me, again. I don't think there's a frustration necessarily with the city, with the council trying to. To address public safety concerns, I think that the frustration is with COVID and the fact that it continues. Impact our way of life, and, and like Doug says, it's been going on till, since March, and, and yet we. Behind us, and this is really our effort to try to.
I do think it's good, we do something to get out ahead of it, I mean. I'd kind of, um, initially thought too, like, is there really gonna be a need or, or an atmosphere, but. Especially for the early games, I mean, there is, if we don't pass something, there is a potential for some big gatherings, and. There's a, there's a community safety issue there, so I do think it impacts. The community, I do think it impacts, even though if I'm not doing it, my neighbors are, and if it increases the spread of COVID, like in our community. That does impact me, because I'm sending my kids to school, and you know, like, they're part of the community, we're all part of the community, so. I, I, I think, I think it would be good if we do something, whether it's this exactly, or. I mean, I kind of initially wondered about the parking on the yards too, because if we're saying, if we're limiting groups of 10, limiting groups to 10. It really doesn't matter how many cars are parked there, if we're still saying you can't have more than 10 people on the yard, but. And then, but I, as I think about it. Most people aren't going to a game, I mean, the, the players' families is, you know, probably have fairly smallish groups, so if they're parking in a yard, they're staying there, right? They're hanging out during the game, like, where else are they going? So I do think limiting parking will limit gatherings. That's, that's how I feel about it.
I agree that we have our responsibility to the, to our residents and to the people visiting, and. We need to, I would say, help our police department out with this and take a stand, um, and I have. Not talked to very many people, but I have had some people say, I wish the city would just do something, not just allow whatever. And. So I agree with passing this resolution.
Lisa, Lisa mentioned the police department being out and dealing with it, really, all I ask is that. I have clear expectations and, and can communicate those also, whether it's exactly this ordinance, you know, because I am receiving those questions now. As far as the police department dealing with it, it will be me dealing with it. Everybody that I have spoken with, I've assured them that it will be me that responds to any complaints about. Whatever, unsafe, unsafe tailgating or parking or gathering, anything that's COVID related, I will be there for the football games. And I will be the one that responds, because I want it to be a consistent message, I want it to be. Another one of my officers, and I have great officers, but another one of my officers is delivering a slightly different message. To the neighbor at last week's game than I am telling to, to this particular house on this game, so. And I just, I want it to be clear what that message is, I want to know what tools I have to deal with it, and then I will be the. The dedicated contact point in dealing with it.
I want to say, I got this, uh, uh, text from Stan Lawverman, and he, um. You know, lives in university heights on Highland, and he, uh, is the Iowa City, uh, rental inspector. And he was our rental inspector in university heights for a time, and he says to me, getting calls from citizens about tailgating. I have players' parents who are concerned about the extra exposure of the people tailgating in the front yards of their kids' houses. It's a mix of U Heights and Iowa City addresses, I just thought I'd give you that public input. Okay, did someone else want to speak?
I was just gonna ask a question with the, just understand the way it's written, so we're saying with. Uh, point four groups greater than 10 individual, individuals are prohibited from gathering on the yard, so we're not saying you could have. Multiple groups of 10 as long as they're spread out, we're saying 10 people per property, basically, is that the way it's written?
Are you talking? Yeah, I didn't, I can't hear you.
Oh. Sorry, I, I think it's, uh, I think that was the intent, as Troy said, not to have 10 here and then 10 over there.
Okay, and then, so for point seven, then we would still say within that 10, we're asking. Individuals to stay six feet apart unless. They live together, or like Troy said, we could potentially say unless they're members of. The same family or bubble or however we want to say that.
Right.
I don't know, I, I'm still wrestling with it, I feel like, I'm. I'm mostly not the, mostly just the parking part of it, just telling people you can't park, is that, is that correct, I'm understanding correctly, there is no parking, right? Except for on streets, there's no parking.
Your driveways.
No parking on yard, yeah, no parking on yards.
On your driveways, of course, just like you can today, you can park on your driveway, you can't park on your grass.
Sure, yeah, I don't, I don't know why that doesn't sit well with me, I think I'm fine if we like even require masks or whatever, but just. Telling people they can't do that, I don't, I mean, I feel like, at some point, you know, people have to, they. They, they calculate if it's a risk that they want to take or not, and. And I don't know why, but just, yeah, I just feel like, I just feel like, it doesn't seem like the right move to, to, to say you cannot park cars. On game days, when that's kind of such a university heights, like staple, you know?
It's just so, Bobby, like, where, no, people aren't going to the game. So you're more worried about just sort of where you're allowing the parking, but not so much the limit on the. Like, number of people you can have there?
Um, I guess, I don't know, I mean, I think, I just, it seems like a little bit of a double standard, uh, to me, like. Just, just going back to the Maggie's example, I mean, I, I'm all for, I'm all for protection, keep people safe, but like, when I go out to eat at Maggie's with my wife. I'm not to make a decision, am I okay taking the risk that I might get COVID? And for me at that time, if I choose to go out, that's obviously, yes, I'm willing to take that risk, I mean, we're sitting around 15 to 20 people. Inside of a, you know, I don't know how big the little patio at Maggie's is, and I'm, and I'm taking that risk, I don't know where those people are from, I don't know, you know what I mean?
Yes, but you're taking risks, you're not.
Have to give people the option to. What's that, Lisa?
I'm sorry, I thought you had stopped there. Um, I'm just saying, you're taking that risk, but, but we're kind of allowing, I mean. You gotta look at the worst case scenario, I would say, not the best case. And you're kind of allowing them to put other people at risk, that's what I guess how I would look at it, I mean, that's what I would say.
Well, even having a restaurant open, you're doing that.
No, you make the, you make the choice to go to that restaurant.
Right.
You don't make the choice to have your next door neighbors have people, yeah.
I guess my, my thought is, if you're on your own property, how would that affect your neighbors? But yet you consider Maggie's, you know, four foot apart, and, and we're okay with that, that, that's the double standard, I think, uh, Bobby and I are kind of wrestling with.
So say they come and they want to go to the game, where are they gonna walk right by your property, I mean, I, I don't know, you know, I think Troy addressed this. When's the commercial, this is residential, that's, that's.
The idea that you can't escape it, I can see that point.
Yeah, it's a slippery slope. But I, I just don't know if we need a bunch more laws, you know, I. I just don't know, unless you're gonna really enforce it, I, I don't know what you're gonna do.
I think, it sounds like Troy's got a good handle on how to. you know, enforce or educate or address. Like I think it's a enforceable policy.
I have a question.
Who has a question?
This is Jim Schamansky. I have a question. Is there time put on this resolution?
Well, Jim, can you make a short statement?
I just have a question.
Louise, I think Jim's question may go to, I was asked also, is this a temporary, basically, is this is this an ordinance change? Somebody asked me this. Is this an ordinance change to deal with the unique situation that COVID is putting us in, or there were some people who were concerned that this was a more lasting change? Well, season's moving forward and and my answer to anybody that asked me that was that this was a temporary change to my understanding to address with the conditions that is that your question, Jim? Am I portraying that right? You and I didn't speak, but I I did speak to other people.
You hit it right on the head. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Dave, you wanted to ask a question?
Yeah. So back to my original thing, you know, if we had, we have a driveway, we could, you know, park folks' parents here and if the resolution goes through, you know, the gathering is a limit of 10, but speaking to one of Police Chief Kelsey's officers, he he said that our family within our own house would count towards that 10. And that was that was really disturbing to me and just wanted wondered if you could speak to that.
Dave, if I might, if I might address that, I believe I believe you may have spoke with Chris Akers. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Uh, Chris asked me, and again, this was a proposal that was being floated and Louise and Steve and I spoke about it. Chris and I spoke about it. We're all, again, this is why I'm asking for clear expectations, so I can give you clear expectations. We're not, we, the police department are not going to drive down the street and say, oh, look, I see 11 people in the yard. I'm going to stop and chat. You know, I walk around on football games. I I plan on doing it this year also. I plan on doing it as safely as I can from COVID and I plan on interacting with any anybody that's out in the yard that would like to. But our responses will be, any contact I have specific to this will be complaint driven. And and I am, I am looking at, I will be looking at what is in the front yard, what is apparent from the street. Not, oh, I see there's 10 people inside or in the yard, but I see that there's somebody moving around inside. My my approach is going to be to address what is readily apparent and what is going on. Kind of going back to even what Doug said, what is going on in the it still might be private property, but in the in the readily seen plain view area, the outside area, not what's going on in your basement in the man cave.
Thank you, because it sure did come across that way and it was really disturbing. So I really appreciate it.
Yeah, and and Chris is doing his best. We're all doing our best to try to deal with this. And this is again, from my perspective, and I think I think Steve did an excellent job in in trying to convey it when he wrote this proposal as as I wish I had in front. I mean, I don't. But this is meant to be, it it tasked the University Heights Police Department to deal with it. But I think even enumerates or elicits through education primarily enforcement is an option. I would, I would, that would be an extreme last resort and it would not be on any sort of last offense. I I just, I don't see that happening, just like there has not been, am I not anybody written a citation or an infraction in the county for not wearing a mask? Yet law enforcement has responded to many, many COVID mask complaints. We're dealing with it through education and 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 asking for compliance, asking for some modification of behavior so that everybody's comfortable, so that we don't get that call back. This is not meant to be a gotcha by any means and and if Chris miscommunicated that, I it's probably on me because again, this is a proposal. Chris told me he had received a call from you. I said that I would take care of it. He knew that I was in the middle of another task and he said, I can do that, chief. I've got it. So I apologize if that caused you any anxiety.
No problem. Appreciate you following up on that.
I guess another point is, you know, it's here in the resolution, the University of Iowa and the City of Iowa City are also not permitting gathering, parking, tailgating, merchandise vending. And I think we need to be show that we're part of that, that we support that. And not be the place that everybody wants to come to.
Is Iowa City's written similar as far as it's the max of 10? Groups of 10s?
I don't know that Iowa City has a restriction on parking. Sarah, I'd need to look at that. The University of Iowa has the restriction. Iowa City has restriction on vending and Johnson County has the restriction on gathering. So I'd I'd have to go back and look. Steve may be able to to say that, to address that better. I know that Steve included as an attachment to the statement or I apologize for not knowing the right words before from the Johnson County Board of Supervisors.
You know, we've been talking about this issue for a little more than half an hour. And I guess I wonder, I I think that people's positions are pretty clear. And I think Troy is pretty clear at this point. What do you exactly do you need from the council? Uh, Louise, do you need a motion or a vote? Because I I definitely want to call the question.
Oh, well, if you want to call the question, we have to vote to call the question, right, Steve? Isn't that right? You have to have a a vote of other council members if they want to call the question.
That sounds fine.
Does anyone else want to call a question and vote on this resolution? Can you like raise your hand if you if you want to call the question and vote now, or do you want to? You know, do you want to? Does anyone else want to vote now?
There currently isn't a motion on the floor.
No, there isn't. But I mean, it's it it would be to vote on the resolution now.
Um, Louise, Greg Stultner, I I don't know now's the right time. I did have a question about our our current property, but I can talk to you guys about that. If if now's a good time to make a comment.
Just let me just say this. I don't see that any of anybody else wants to vote right now. So
We want to continue to discuss this question after we've used most of our council meeting for it.
Well.
There is not one other person that would like to call the question.
I know you do, but the other council, the majority has to agree.
I I'm just asking, is there anybody else that wants to call this question?
I've asked. I said to raise your hand if you want to vote now. Called the question means to bring it to a vote. I I don't see any. Lisa, did you raise your hand?
No, I didn't. I was messing with my hair. Excuse me.
Okay. And and that's what we need to call the question. One person can't call the question. I know it happens in meetings, but that's not Robert's rules.
All right. Well, I'll tell you then, I'm not going to be too concerned with how long this council meeting lasts, and I want you to know that. And that during my time, I'm going to be going in detail for a number of issues. And so if we can continue to talk about this or you want to continue to talk about this, I think all the positions are pretty well established. I'm with Sarah and Lisa. And I'm ready to call the question and vote. Nobody else is? Fine. You can continue to discuss it.
Okay, thank you, Casey. Greg, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of I'm going to do whatever you guys say. I'm I'm easy. We don't really have a lot of people wanting to park on our lot. At the hotel during the game time, I think maybe 12 people are interested out of, you know, we have 160 parking spots out there, but I don't know that all of them be done, but I'll do whatever you guys tell me to do. I just wanted to be clear what your guys' expectations of our lot is, I guess, and just so I know. And and if there isn't, if it's a considered a commercial property and and I I you guys are giving me some free will there. I I'm going to be for sure, you know, every other parking spot if if I didn't have any people that want to park at that location, but I just, I'll do whatever you guys say. I'm not sure what, I'm not clear on what you guys, how you guys want me to con- conduct game days on our on our lot. I will say, you know, any little help on, you know, helping me pay for this building is good, but I'm not, I'm not crazy, crazy interested in in having a lot of people park there, but it it could go either way with me. I just want to let you guys know where my my um, my thoughts were and just ask, I guess, what's your expectations of my lot is?
Okay, thanks, Greg.
Louise, may I say something?
Uh, who is this? Mike? Okay. Mike Ritchie? Okay. Can you make it short, Mike?
Yeah, I'll do. When I first saw the resolution, I was upset with, I thought it was too restrictive for the amount of people there. I had conversation with Troy and go along with Troy's recommendations and how he's going to lease this thing. One of my concerns, though, is we if we, you know, we're outlawing this thing, you know, we're trying to make these restrictions on game day this year. There's no guarantee that the coronavirus is going to go away, you know, next year is kind of like the flu. And and also if people don't go to Iowa to University Heights and hang out, I've had conversations where they go downtown to the bars and stuff and and but the spread will be the same. Because these people, when they go to work Monday, are going to be with their coworkers. It doesn't matter to me where they get infected at. You know, I don't want to infect the neighborhood of University Heights, but but spread is spread. And I I think that that's something that we have taken into consideration and if you watch the news today, there's so much misinformation on the coronavirus and there has been from the beginning. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Does anyone want to discuss anything further? Maybe more questions with Troy, I mean, so that he has some clarity of what your thoughts are?
So I guess to Greg's question, I think the way I'm reading this, it would apply because it doesn't necessarily say residential only, I don't think, right? So this would apply to the hotel parking lot? Am I reading that right?
Yeah, so the the prohibition on parking in the resolution concerns parking on yards. The development agreement for the hotel, which has nothing to do with the pandemic. The development agreement at the hotel says that parking on the hotel property is restricted to hotel guests, staff and service providers during the time that they're staying at the hotel.
Is council ready to vote or?
I guess I could vote. I I'm I'm fine voting. I guess all I'll say is if there's like Bobby or Doug modifications that you want to make, I'd be open to to maybe some adjustments, but otherwise I'm I'm okay voting with how it is.
I'm okay voting and I I think we've had three pretty knowledgeable people that have put this together and I think we need to support them, support our police department and think about our community.
Yeah, I think it's fine. I think we can vote.
Okay. So thank you, everyone. So this is 2020, right? Resolution consideration of resolution number 2020 concerning tailgating and related activity on UI football games days as written. Is there a motion? So motion by Casey. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Sarah second.
Sarah second. Okay, it's a resolution, so we'll have a roll call vote. Any further discussion before we vote? Okay, Mike, roll call vote.
Roll call vote. O'Sullivan?
Hi.
Scott?
Nay.
Swales?
No.
Cook?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Motion passes three two.
Okay, thanks, everyone.
Thank you for the direction and it's clear by the conversation, the different opinions, but at least this way I can give a consistent answer and and promise you that I'll address this as inextrusively as I can. And and anyway, I think this will work.
Very good. Thanks, Troy.
Thank you. And Steve, thank you too. Do you have anything else you wanted to go over? Does council have any questions for Steve? Before we move on, his report. Okay, we'll go to the city clerk report and that was a written report submitted. And one of the things was the renewal of the liquor license for the, not renewal, request for a liquor license for, I'm so used to saying renewal, for the hotel Marriott. All that was submitted as written in the report. Is there a motion for this? For
All motion.
Motion by Bobby? Is there a second? Somebody second?
I'll second it.
Second by Casey. Is there discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, say no. Okay, it carries five zero. Let's see. Mike, did you have anything? Oh, I know what I wanted to say about the clerks report. As you notice, there's always the building inspector has the building permits. Well, one of the council members asked me about having a regular rental inspector report. And after talking to Lisa Moore about it more, I thought it was a very good idea and I talked to Brian Jensen. And so that's included. The first report kind of catches up to where he is and you can see then what what inspections he's been doing, what kind of things happened during the inspections, what what needed to be updated and then also complaints that he's handled. I think it's a very good idea to do. So this first one is quite a few pages, but that goes back from January and then some months will be shorter, a lot shorter. But anyway, I think it's a good idea. Don't counsel, don't you find it useful?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, that's right.
Thanks, Louise, for asking for that.
Well, thank you, Lisa. And then, so we'll go on to the treasures report. And with that treasures report, we had warrants that were sent and the list of warrants. Lori, did you have any more warrants? You had said you checked your email at the office.
I did. There's a one late fee that we're going to refund to somebody who paid two of them. I don't remember his name, Mike. Perhaps you can.
That was Kevin Moat, who works for Midwest One Bank and their their manager. He he thought the regular fee was 225 and then he added 75 on to it, but with the regular feeding 150, the 225 already had the late fee on it. So he added a second late fee for a single permit.
I see. So you're doing a refund for him?
Right, right.
Okay. And anything else, Lori?
Nope, everything is on the list today, so.
Is there any objection to paying the bills?
Nope.
Hearing none, the bills will be paid by unanimous consent. So we'll go down to Chief Chief's report and Sarah O'Sullivan's report. And Chief, you have a very good report, quite a big report, lots of things in it. Does anyone have any questions for Chief about his report? I, I do want to say one thing, um, at the very end, he talked about this, uh, special meeting that he was having and invited to the panel and it had to do with Kevin Saunders and could you tell the name of that meeting again?
Sure.
I don't have it in front of me.
It's the annual summit on justice and is justice and disparities. Uh, it's drawn by the NAACP. This is the eighth year that they've done it and it targets really people from all different facets of the system, whether they're social workers, uh, prosecutors, police officers, medical staff, but it's, it's focused primarily on the justice system. Uh, lawyers, judges, to address disparity and everything from, from enforcement to sentencing to incarceration. Yes, I was invited. I, I met with, uh, Sarah and Kevin yesterday and Kevin sprung it on me that, that they were inviting me to be one of their featured guest panelists. Uh, Kevin and I discussed it afterward and we've had more discussion today and I did confirm that I would, uh, participate in that. It is a Zoom meeting this year because of COVID. It also affects their fundraising. Uh, he asked about University Heights, whether they'd be interested in doing a sponsorship. I included, I passed along his request in that item in item K. Uh, that's really for your consideration, but Sarah may be able to speak more to the NAACP's opinion of U Heights and the partnership that we.
I think it's that, that they invited you to be a panelist. I mean, that says a lot about our chief and what respect they have for you and what you bring to the table. I think that's fabulous and, uh, Lisa, did you want to say something? Did you, were, somebody speaking?
I think that was. I wasn't, but that was, that was Sarah.
Oh, it was Sarah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I was just gonna say, I did, as Troy said, um, I met with him and Kevin yesterday and I know he reiterated his, um, respect for Troy and, you know, they, um, just feel like they have a really good relationship with University Heights, um, and the NAACP. So I think this speaks to that.
So I was looking at the sponsorships and, uh, a full sponsorship is quite a, a big deal and, you know, they talked about a booth and all that, but I know it's Zoom and everything. But I was looking over the budget and especially, um, I hadn't planned on spending any money for the farmer's market this year or next year. Uh, it's very successful with the signs we have and we have $500 there and I thought, um, um, we could, uh, I would recommend we give them $500 and take it from the farmer's market line budget. I think they'd be happy with that amount. And I can find it easily in the budget.
I agree.
They would be with, happy with anything that you could contribute. Like I said, they're very happy that, that one, University Heights is, is taking a lead on some of these issues across the state and as I expressed to Sarah and as Kevin expressed to Sarah, that even though University Heights is a small community and I'm the chief of that small community, that you allow me the time to work with this organization in a much larger area.
I'm in favor of that $500 contribution, Louise.
And Bobby and Doug?
Yeah, sure. I'm muted.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was muted. Go ahead. Yes, that's good. I'm great.
Okay, uh, Steve, is that good enough to have consensus or do you want to form a vote?
No, I think that the, the council is, you know, unanimously approved.
Okay, I do too. Thank you and are there any questions?
I'll communicate that to Kevin tomorrow. I appreciate that. And again, if you have any, I've taken up a lot of time, so if there are any issues or questions on my report, please feel free to get ahold of me at your.
And Sarah, you had a written report too and just, are there any questions for Sarah with hers? She invited follow-up for that report too. Thank you, Sarah. We'll keep going down to engineer report and committee report from Josiah and Doug. So, did you want to start first?
Yeah, I can. Uh, so I submitted a written report. I think the main, uh, things different and completed from last month on Olive Court is the trees were planted along the street, um, the punch list item that the contractor's working on, they're, uh, basically almost wrapped up with that. Uh, we checked the status of that today. Um, so I, I expect that by the next month's meeting, they will be done and, and ready for a, a final pay application on that project. Uh, the pavement markings, uh, were completed. I guess, I know you approved the warrants and as noted, the warrants for the pavement marking project and that, um, pay application from BWC was included in that and, and approved on our end, uh, for payment. As far as that project, um, the street repairs, uh, on Melrose Avenue and down on Cozier and Highland were completed last month. And then, uh, I included a section there just to note as a follow-up from last month that, uh, I did have a chance to meet with Doug and we did a, a street walk through, through town to start looking at the items that we're gonna put cost to and give consideration in the next fiscal budget process at the end of this year. So I won't go through all of them, but they're all listed there, the main ones we, we identified.
Doug, did you want to add anything?
Uh, yeah, the only thing that I really have as, as verbal here is, um, just kinda letting everybody know, um, I'm doing inspections of all the storm intakes where the rainwater runs off into, uh, there's some placards on a lot of the storm drains that are missing, so I've got a map of the storm drains and I'm, uh, uh, taking an inventory of how many are missing so I can get those glued back on before winter. Uh, the second thing, and I think this is in Josiah's report, but, uh, uh, if you're all familiar with that sidewalk that's kicked up down there on the, the west corner of George and Cozier, uh, that thing is really wicked. That thing is sticking up three inches plus. That is a huge, huge, huge hazardous, uh, uh, piece of sidewalk sticking up and, uh, Josiah and myself, we both talked to, uh, the owner with, with that big massive tree right there on the corner and it sounds like we're gonna have to come up with a, a kind of a go around, uh, around the tree to take care of that. But right now, that thing is just, uh, it looks like a lawsuit waiting to happen. I don't know if we should put some yellow tape up or orange spray paint, put a sign up, be, because man, if somebody hits that on a bicycle, that is gonna throw their, their handlebars and break a lot of bones. Uh, but yeah, we need to do something, uh, either fix it right away, block it off, paint it, we gotta do something with it, but we gotta get on that real quick because, uh, that, that, I didn't realize how bad it was until Josiah and I did that walkthrough and it's like, holy crap, that just, my, made my blood just freezing my, my veins when I saw that. So that is something that we're gonna have to get kicked up here real soon and I, it's not a big project, not a lot of money. I mean, that, that should be a, a, a pretty easy, quick, easy, uh, go around that tree, uh, project. It's not a big expense, it should be an easy breezy one. And then also, while this is not on the agenda for tonight's meeting, um, I, I've been approached by three different physicians at the university, uh, bringing up that pedestrian crossing there in Olive and Melrose and apparently this has been an ongoing issue with previous councils and, uh, they're asking for us to do something about that. Um, but, you know, it's a long story, but it, in a nutshell, now, it's awful hard to have a, a crossing there when we have a street light back to the west a little bit, so that, that's one of the challenges. Um, I came up with an idea that, like I say, we'll, we'll go into a bigger presentation for, uh, our next meeting here with Josiah and I are gonna show pictures and I came up with an idea and we're gonna have to work with Iowa City. I think a good idea would be to actually put a pedestrian crossing on the east side of the bridge, which is in Iowa City and have an island there. That way it's far enough away from both stoplights, the one on our side by Stella's and the one down in front of the hospital, but, uh, at least, I mean, people are always gonna cross, even if we take that crosswalk away, they're still gonna walk out in front of, uh, of cars and it's just, it's a dangerous situation apparently that's, it just needs to be addressed, but, uh, we'd like to get Iowa City on board and see if they'd be on board, putting a, uh, some kind of a marked signaled pedestrian crossing, but, uh, yeah, that, that needs to get discussed because, uh, I'm, like I said, getting some emails and I promised to look into this and I, I do want to get it on next month's, uh, agenda and, uh, get everybody's feedback and any public input that we can to, uh, take care of this problem. And then, uh, also as a reminder, I, our first leaf pickup is the 26th, it's, uh, so perfectly put on our email or our website that Lisa's been on, they're very nicely done, but just a reminder, 26th is the, the first one and, uh, that's really all I have.
Okay, thank you Doug. Uh, we'll talk some more about that as we move towards November and, uh, you can send out some of the information to the council before the meeting too. For, okay, very good. Any questions for Doug?
I've got some questions, Louise.
Yes.
Um, I, I'm struggling, uh, quite a bit with how this, uh, two-year budget jives with the five-year budget that we've been working, uh, for. And I guess I wondered, uh, you know, how are these, uh, have you prioritized these items? Do we have any idea what they cost? Um, you know, is it, uh, uh, did you ignore the conversation Josiah that I had or did you try to integrate some of those ideas? Are they consistent with the, uh, comprehensive plan? Um, you know, just, uh, just take one of those questions on if you would, because I'm really struggling with this. You know, it seems to me that I put in, uh, you know, I was, I was asked to do a comprehensive, uh, capital improvements budget, which I did at the behest of the council and now this whole thing seems to be a completely different, uh, capital improvements budget and I don't get it. I mean, if Doug, for example, if your superior asks you to do a particular project, which you did, and then, then said, oh no, I'm gonna do it all myself, the time that you put into this is completely wasted and unnecessary, you'd have a little problem with that and frankly, I've got a problem with it. If there was concerns about it, you know, we tried to integrate the Melrose road widening into this thing, we tried to fit it into a budget as to what we can afford and this looks to me like the old, uh, the way that University Heights has always done it, which is by gum and by golly, instead of adhering to a reasonable plan that we're all on the same page. That's what we've been doing for the last 10 months with a comprehensive plan, with a setting of priorities and finally with a capital improvements budget. And that budget was put together so that Bobby can continue his work in getting us a five-year budget to, to come, to, at this point, to come up with a completely different plan, I find extremely irritating and unnecessary. And unless you guys have got some numbers and can place it in the context of a budget and the priorities that we've established, I think we can safely ignore all the work that you've done, which is unnecessary. I'm very upset about this.
Uh, Josiah does this walkthrough with the, uh, council member for the streets and sidewalks every year. Every year he does this and, uh...
So we're gonna ignore the capital improvements budget that I put together, that you asked me to put together because of this?
I, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying.
That is the effective.
And I think that, you know, yet and I think it still can be decided and worked out together. I mean, these are, they walked around and identified things.
Let me give you a specific example. The sidewalk along Oak Crest from Sunset to Horn School didn't make the cut. We eliminated that from the, the next five years. We can still do that, but we can't afford to do that because it didn't meet the criteria which we established. Older product town, child safety, um, what kind of traffic we had, et cetera. We use a bunch of criteria to decide what were the top projects. It doesn't mention, uh, the bend in the road on Highland Avenue and the place in the sidewalk. It doesn't say anything about improving the, uh, Swisher track for wheelchairs, strollers and walkers and disabled. Uh, as far as I'm concerned, you know, there's, there's some things that they left out and, uh, on, on Cozier between George Street and, uh, Sunset, we suggested a complete redo, a renovation. It sounds like they're, uh, contemplating some repairs, but it didn't, it didn't sound like they were doing a comprehensive work on that. So, I don't get it. I don't get it. I don't know what we've done for the last 10 months and I've been sitting on this comprehensive plan for four months and it looks like I'm gonna be sitting on it for another month and we've had plenty of input on it and I haven't heard any of this until tonight. I am very upset.
Would anyone like to speak about this?
Uh, sure, I would. Uh, you know, Casey, one of your first questions was whether these, some of these items incorporated some of the goals and, uh, projects laid out in that, uh, plan that you put together and that we talked about. And I, and actually quite, quite a few of these are, um, similar projects to what we had in there. So I, I mean, I, I got the feeling you said none, none of them were, but I, I'm looking through the spreadsheet now and actually several of them do address some of these exact same areas. Um, some of the other, you know, like, uh, the Swisher track, that, that wasn't really in the scope of looking at streets and sidewalks that particular day.
It's within the scope of our capital improvements budget and you know that it was within the scope.
Yeah, and, and these are just basically streets and sidewalks repair items, not necessarily, just, just because the Swisher track is not on our walkthrough, doesn't mean it's, um...
No, it'll be ignored if, if you decided not to put it on your capital improvements budget. I, I agree with you, there is some overlap and in fairness, we should consider that the MPO only gives money for our, our turials, it doesn't give any money for our, uh, uh, local infrastructure and that's the problem that has distorted infrastructure improvements for the last three decades. And that is, that is what we're continuing to foster. Yeah, we can, we can, you know, take on the big projects, but we need the little ones to have some, some attention. And you have no idea what the budget are and, and Doug said, he's just starting the cost now. Well, you know, we have the costs for the capital improvements budget integrated over time and, uh, you know, there's a lot of contradictory stuff in this.
I think Josiah is getting yelled at here and we're not speaking up as council members and, uh, I guess I'm confused also because we have not discussed or gone through or approved or adopted a capital improvements budget.
You have four months with that in front of you and if you haven't approved it or critiqued it in four months, then I question our abilities as a council. And yes, I am kind of, uh, confronting Josiah because it is the job of the council to set priorities. It is the job of the engineer to carry them out. It is not the job of the engineer to set priorities. He can influence that process and he, he, and we did some of that, but he can't set the priorities. That is our job.
As a council and Doug and Josiah went around, which they said they were going to do, which I think I suggested in one of our meetings, that, that Josiah needs to be involved here and streets and sidewalks.
Josiah was involved in a meeting with me prior to this. I invited Doug, who was unable to show up and offered to meet with him at some alternate time. I don't know what more I could have done to involve them. We have a fund of a hundred thousand dollars in my capital improvements budget for improvements to the sidewalk and I think some of these things can fall under that. Um, but the projects that don't have priorities, they don't have any costs, they don't necessarily fit with a big, bigger budget and it's a improvisation, which is something I think we should be avoiding. As a planner said, it's nice to have a plan. It's nice to have a process that we can all, and look at, have time to look at, which we have, and make some good decisions.
I certainly agree with having a plan. I mean, I think that this walkthrough was one of the things that we discussed as far as, you know, before deciding on what is involved or what is included in that five-year plan. I think I was expecting this walkthrough and to see that output of it. So I guess could they be, could we combine it, right? Because I, like Josiah said, there is some overlap. And maybe just because everything is on this list from the walkthrough, you know, probably everything is not the same priority. So I guess I don't see them as mutually exclusive, but we, I'd like to see them brought together to say, okay, these are between improvements and maybe any new sidewalks. Like where do they fall and where are they going to line up in this, you know, in a five-year plan?
Josiah and I walked this entire town. And what we're looking at was the, the most damaged parts of town that we have to fix first. Like say we have have to's and we have want to's. I know you all want a bunch of want to's, that's fine and dandy, but we have to take care of the stuff that's broken. It's, it's cracked, there's water running underneath it. I wish there was a magic fund that we could just say, let's do it all. But right now Josiah and I are putting together numbers and this is what we do. This is, and it takes time. Sorry.
As it turned out Doug, I walked this town completely, just as you have. And I looked at it in terms of what the comprehensive plan is telling me and what we can do to make the things actionable. And so I say you and Josiah walk the town, that's no different than what I did. And that was part of my job to put this capital improvements budget together. Now, if you guys want to combine the two and, and provide some numbers, I'm satisfied with that. But after four months, I think that we should be in a position next month to approve a capital and budget and quit screwing around. Shall we just wait on it for another two months, three months, four months until the end of our term? Or shall we get this thing going?
Josiah, I understood you to say that you were going to put price, sorry, cost estimates to these items under 4B. Did I hear that, Josiah?
Yeah, that is, that is what happens with the, with each of these items for the budget discussion, so.
So how long is that going to take Josiah? How long should we wait for that?
Sorry, you cut out.
How long should we wait for those cost estimates to come through?
Well, we usually do it at budget time when, you know, and he has, you know, like January, like, you know, that's when we usually do it. And Josiah is our staff and he'll do, I know talking to Josiah over the years, he'll do whatever the council wants him to do.
Yeah.
For us.
Yeah, the typical budget situation starts in January, but we can get, we can get numbers to these sooner, if that's what you want.
That's what I want. And I want the numbers by November and I want to have these two budgets, separate budgets, integrated together and make a decision to approve or disapprove, one way or another. After five months, I'm getting a little impatient.
Does anyone, does other council members agree with that? I mean, that's one person. What is the council? What's their consensus? That's what Casey suggests.
So what's the expectation Casey, that by next month, we, so, so say we vote on this plan and it's approved or not approved, I guess, I'm just thinking next steps, right? Because it's, it's going to be budgeting for next year. So I mean, could it be a deadline before the next year's budget is laid out? Because none of this is what we're spending in the current year. Is that right? I'm just trying to think of the, I know, I understand you put a lot of work into it and I understand you want to see it move forward. But what's the like real kind of like end date, the push to have it done by November?
Yeah, it's a sequential thing. And, and Bobby's five-year plan, which we discussed is one of our priorities, this five-year budget, depends on this budget. And so he's, he's asked for at least three months, I think, or four. And so by that time, that'll be after our January budgeting date. So I think we can, we should be able to figure this out so that he can move ahead with his budget. That's my concern. And I think that, you know, I'm just, I've had it with this.
I think we need to take into consideration Josiah's time also. So.
Well, I do intend to, to put these costs. I mean, I guess I just reiterate again, I, I see that a number of the things we came up with came directly off the focus we put on to the capital improvements projects, locations and types and discussions, so.
Well, I don't
And, and the fact that they reflect some of those, to me, shows that that's, that's kind of what we were doing.
I don't see a problem with saying, let's allocate $100,000 to take care of some of these repairs that Doug has highlighted, such as the sidewalk on Cozer and George, you know, some panels, that kind of thing.
Yeah, right.
You know, we could probably get four items out of that to help combine the two budgets. But this, this is not acceptable to me.
Yeah, because I see that, because from year to year, so say, say we, you know, establish a five-year plan. From year to year, the repairs are going to be unpredictable, right? So
Absolutely.
Money set aside to fix repairs that were unforeseen.
Yeah, I guess my other comment, Casey, you mentioned the Cozer, Cozer Avenue, which we've talked a lot about. And I wouldn't characterize my description there in the time we spent on Cozer as a complete overhaul. But trying to come up with ideas that would address Cozer Avenue and the street condition as well as the sidewalks without going through what you, like similar to what we did with Olive Court, you know, during construction, we cleared out the entire road, the trees, the sidewalks. It was very intrusive in that manner. And the, the ideas we tried to come up with out there were, how could we do this and have as little impact as possible to the existing trees on, on Cozer? Because there, the trees and the character of those trees is much different than what we encountered in Olive Court, so. I just say all that to say, that description was not a what I want to say, it wasn't trying to completely move the, move the game or move the ball on that. It was just a development of, okay, what, what is this really going to look like? How can we really get this done and achieve a number of different objectives? So I'll, I'll leave it at that. I just, I just didn't want you to leave with a feeling that that was a bait and switch.
Well, one of the compromises that I was shown, that I showed in my amended, and I'll deal with this when I have, you know, when it's my turn, I'll talk about it.
Okay, so are there any other questions for Josiah or Doug? So we finished with streets and sidewalks and we'll go to Bobby with finance. Do you have any updates, Bobby?
No, nothing major. I mean, we're, we're starting to get numbers, you know, you and I, Louise talked about, you know, potential assessments on the hotel and what that could possibly mean in terms of tax, property tax revenue and stuff. But, you know, really nothing major, so.
Okay, thank you Bobby. We'll go down to Casey's report. And Casey, can we start with second consideration of ordinance number 248, amending ordinance number 110, rental housing code with respect to short-term rentals? We'll consider that, second consideration first. Could we get a motion on the table for second consideration?
So moved.
Okay, thank you Casey. Motion by Casey, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Sarah. Discussion.
I don't know that we have much of a choice on this one, do we?
Steve's shaking his head no.
I think our hands are kind of tied, so we can
Okay, we can have a roll call vote. By Mike.
Roll call, yes, sorry. I have to hit unmute. Scott?
Aye.
Swales?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Carried?
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to Casey's committee report.
As you know, I submitted a zoning report as of October 13th. And, and I'm going to go over this report. I had a couple of comments about what we're trying to do to integrate the Melrose project into the capital improvements budget. And I want to articulate my concerns about the Melrose project. And I, first of all, I want to say, well, I'll cover this in the report, but I want to articulate my concerns regarding the current plan for Melrose. We have spent the last nine months considering the comprehensive plan, goal-setting sessions, capital development budget, which attempted to make the comprehensive plan actionable. The purpose of this work is essentially to get the council on the same page, to clarify what we want to see happen in the best interests of the citizens of University Heights. We have operated too alone without some priorities, awaiting opportunities passively, rather than deciding on what we want to see and where we can allocate resources most effectively and most prudently. Awaiting opportunities is not an optimum way to conduct city business. We have had a myopic view of the budget, which is our primary management tool, but seldom raised and placed on the screen. As a result, we chase federal dollars that fail to fit our criteria and thus pushes back our priorities for another term. I argued last night, and I'm talking about at the last council meeting, that we should however, honor the work of previous councils and cut back the project to two years rather than three. I'm not talking about eliminating the project altogether. Our shares should be closer to 500 rather than the 750, which we've obligated ourselves to. To do so would not be difficult because 45% of the project is design and contingencies. This would require bonding, yet calculations on what the bonds would cost has not been made clear. Thus, we have to cut about 300,000 of hard costs in order to reach our $500,000 goal. If we can do that, if we cannot do that, we cannot afford to do the project. I am concerned about how this project would evolve. It is not surprising that significant spending focuses on our two arterials, namely Sunset and Melrose, at the price of neglecting our local infrastructure. Only these arterials qualify for MBO, MPO funding. And put simply, large projects are more attractive to our manifold contractors. Whether they meet with our established goals is immaterial to them. It is a rare contractor who cares. The project does not account for inflation or changes in commodities prices. There's a predisposition to bury additional utility lines, which would only extend to George Street. The bike lane would end at Sunset. What then? Would we use the same rationale and thus additional dollars to extend the bike lane or bury the remaining utilities? Will additional funds be available from the MPO? Or would we expect to cover these costs and at what match? We went from 31% to 50%. Why wouldn't it change further? The project has the characteristics where you find yourself putting additional money in because you've come this far. It's a rationale for neglecting our needs for a generation. Much of the opposition to reducing the cost of this project focuses on the competitive nature of MPO funding. Returning some of those funds demonstrates probity, would build our credibility rather than detract from it. The next project would infer that we need the money and that the match we're requesting, that we do not spend our money unnecessarily. But when we ask, it's because we have the best interests of all our citizens and the many citizens passing through. I don't want to blame planners, but having been through a master's program in urban, urban regional planning, I've learned that financial feasibility is not paramount. We have to look out for ourselves. Security takes on various guises. On the one hand, there's the security of bicycles. On the other hand, there's the security of pedestrians in other parts of the city. There's the security of spending within your means. There is the security of knowing that your council is making good decisions. We have good resources beginning to materialize, but we're not sure of what those resources are or when they will be available. I don't want to create unnecessary fears, but legislating for our aspirations requires that we be mindful of the budget and timing as well as fiduciary responsibilities. I talked, excuse me, my mouth is a little dry. I talked to various council members and Louise about what would be a reasonable compromise to incorporate the Melrose project and the work they've done into our capital improvements budget. And in fairness, we should consider that we're getting funds from outside sources for this particular project. And that should be one of our criteria. Sarah went through the criteria and found that the Melrose project was a much higher ranking than I gave it. If we are able, if we can cut $300,000 of hard costs out of that budget, if we can bond for the project, and if we can make substantive progress on the rest of our capital improvements budget, whatever that may be, then I'm satisfied that this project should definitely go ahead. If we can't do those three things, then I don't think we can do it. That's my input on the, the various projects and how they fit together.
So you want to discuss the Melrose Avenue Complete Streets project? And you're saying that for you to accept it, you need a $300,000 cut?
In the, in the hard cost. And that would be based on Doug's suggestion. He was saying that we added the burying in the utilities kind of after the fact. And if we take that out of it, we can do everything else. And as you suggested Louise, you felt that that would not jeopardize the project, that you could sell it. You said you could sell it, you could sell it to the MPO, I think.
You don't have to speak for me. I can speak for myself because you kind of took it a little out of context, first of all. And I mean this in a kind way too. First of all, I said, have you checked with Josiah about pulling that out? And you said no. And then you said, you know, that this should decrease his fees. And I said, did you check with Josiah? And you said no. And I know by being here a few years, that I checked with my engineer to see, he's, he's designed the project, he brought it to, you know, we directed him to design this project at where we could, we could take it to the MPO. And I said I needed to talk to him. But I was very glad to hear Casey, that you weren't taking out the bike lanes, taking out the pedestrian part, taking out the traffic lanes, because I, it's very important to be a complete street I, it's very important to be a complete street project. So if it can be cut by taking out overhead line, I'm, and it doesn't, to me, interfere with the project, with the integrity of the complete street project. But I don't know if those cuts can be made. But in it also, I'm not sure this council needs to decide that right now. I mean, this is going to be going forward to twenty-two, twenty-three. And that's what you're suggesting that this council do, but there doesn't have to be a vote on it right now. We can move it along and see how it goes and look at the finances. And when Bobby starts looking at the finances that will be coming in, I think we can make a decision towards that. And I don't think we need to maybe put everything exactly as, you know, in a certain amount, because I think these are all kind of estimates.
Let me, let me expand on that a little bit, Louise, because those design costs were expressed as a percentage of the entire project. And we did, we did, I remember, have a, have a, we can't say that we really understood that, but if you cut five hundred thousand dollars out of a project, then certainly the twenty percent contingency cost would be twenty percent of five hundred thousand that would be reduced. And I don't think that's, that's, that was at issue. The question was, would Josiah's design costs and the construction design costs, which are now expressed as twenty-five percent of the project, remain the same if we got five hundred thousand, or three hundred thousand dollars out of the hard costs? And you're right. I, I have to ask Josiah about that, and I'll do that right now. Josiah, would the design cost be pretty much the same? You know, if we, we look at one-fifth of one point five million, what's that, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand? Five goes into one point five, three hundred thousand, I think. Would those costs be reduced if we reduce the project by three hundred thousand in hard costs?
Well, the answer is, the answer is, it certainly could be. It all depends on where those costs that you're cutting come out from. You know, I see, for example, like the overhead underground work to move those lines. I think that was like estimated like two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, if I remember right?
You're right.
So like, in that case, if that's where the bulk of that is coming out, I mean, that doesn't really change the design too much. I mean, Mid-American does all their own design, right, for their underground work and things like that. So that'd be one case where that wouldn't change the design too much. You still have to work with Mid-American. You still have to secure easements for them to relocate their poles. Even, you know, if they're not going to go underground, they're going to have to put those poles, they're going to have to take them out and move them further back. You know, you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
Yeah. So, so just in that, in that situation, that's one where it would save costs for the project, definitely, but it really wouldn't change the design. But if you, but if you start taking, you know, if we start looking at locations in the design where we simplify things, then yes, that would obviously have a direct correlation.
And do you have any suggestions as to what those changes might be to get us to that five hundred thousand dollar reduction?
I, I don't, insofar as I've done like a complete evaluation of this and come to a final answer. We've talked about this, you and I have, you know, the most decorative thing out there on that project is the, the brick paper crosswalks across the street there at the intersection. And those could certainly come out. Other than that, I think, I think the big items after that is, is lighting, because the project concept included basically new light poles and pedestrian lighting along this corridor. And that is, that is not a cheap item. So that, that'd be another big area where there's a lot of money that would change that design.
And I think our concern is to not jeopardize the project as a whole, which is transportation for all forms of transportation, bicycles, pedestrians, electric vehicles, like skateboards and scooters. Isn't that really kind of what they're after? Weren't those the basics? Okay, and, and?
Yeah, I mean, when, when we had that work session with Kent from the MPO, I thought he did a good job of, you know, explaining what, what pieces of that were important to them when they voted, and that was definitely one of those.
Okay. So, so in answer to the other question you had, Louise, if we're to integrate that with a capital improvements budget over the next five years, I think that, you know, there's no reason not to have it in there because we'll have an incomplete budget for Bobby to work with if we don't. And we, we have a reasonable compromise, and there's no reason not to put it in there for the November meeting.
I haven't heard from the other council if they're for that. You've been speaking for them, but I'd like to hear from them what they think of cutting five hundred thousand or whatever the amount is, two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand.
That's my question. Go ahead, Doug.
I just said, I talked to Casey earlier about this, about the overhead utilities, that, you know, that's one thing that we could take away that should not affect and disqualify us from any MPO funding. But what if, you know, if this were to go to vote before the residents, the university, say at the next special election or whatever, that we bond for that two-hundred-and-something thousand dollars back to incorporate that back into that same project? So that way, we can still have our cake and eat it, too. But is this something that we should put before the University Heights citizens to say, you know, hey, we'd really like to see them underground? Well, I guess that's a large chunk of money that maybe that's something that we should ask the residents, you know? We're not talking twenty thousand, we're talking two hundred thousand. Maybe this is something we should get more public input on, whether it's a special election vote that says, you know, we're authorizing three hundred thousand or five hundred thousand in additional bond money to incorporate into the MPO project, so that way we don't lose our MPO money, but yet we still get our underground utilities buried. Is that a possibility?
Sarah, were you going to say something?
Well, yeah, I was just going to ask, so the cutting, so this number of five hundred thousand that Casey suggested we cut out, like, is that based on the current budget? I'm just trying to understand, like, how, where is that? What's that? What's driving that five hundred thousand? And knowing that when this project begins, we're going to have additional revenue, I mean, does that change that story? Because that, is that based on our current revenue? Or is that based on what a revenue is going to be when this project?
Yeah, our current, our current revenue, and it depends on what people want, but our current revenue out of, out of the cash that we generate, we can generally do capital improvements of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. If we, if it goes over that, then we need to bond for it. And, you know, I'm, I'm down with Doug's idea, but, but I'm thinking that the overhead lines go all the way from the bridge to George Street. That's about a third of University Heights. And it was sort of added, you know, to the project as we went along. But one of the things they did was they changed it from thirty-one percent match to a fifty percent match. So we went from five hundred thousand to seven hundred and fifty thousand. And I think, at that point, we were chasing federal money rather than defining and sticking to our priorities. I don't know if I answered your question, Sarah.
No, I think it's so, I mean, that's basically, that's based on our current budget. So, you know, knowing that, you know, when this project starts, you know, we'll have additional revenue from the hotel. Is that an option to apply that money towards this project? So that?
Well, I was, I was kind of counting on, I was kind of counting on that money, you know, I, I used the, the number two hundred and fifty thousand. But when, when we paid for Olive Court, we had sixty thousand, I believe, in, in code development costs from the, from the developer of that condominium association in Iowa City there. We had a hundred and seventy-six thousand, I think, from the sale of a house. And we had another, oh, it was a smaller amount, like fourteen thousand. All of those were one-time deals. And so we'll have two hundred and forty thousand if we count on the hotel motel tax, and if they're, you know, if they're able to reach their, you know, some of their bowls in terms of occupancy. But that'll be about two hundred thousand. And that'll occur in twenty, twenty-one. It won't, we won't be getting the money from property taxes until September of twenty-twenty-two. And my thought was, you know, there's, we're going to have a lot more flexibility when we can fully assess and tax the OUP project. But until then, I'm reluctant to, to, you know, spend a whole lot of money because, you know, I'm not sure that, that we're going to have it. And right now, OUP is about sixty percent occupied, and it's been, I don't know, four years, I think. So they're, they're lagging on their occupancy, and there's a lot more competition right now for the senior market. So I'm concerned about that.
Yeah. I guess just knowing that this is going to bid in twenty-twenty-three, right? So, I mean, we can say now, like, yeah, we'd be okay with not burying the power lines. But if in twenty-twenty-three, I mean, the council at that time is ultimately going to decide what the scope of the project?
They certainly can. I mean, they can make another decision, and they can, they can establish their own priorities. But I think that this council has established its priorities and what they want to see. And those are pretty well incorporated into capital improvements budget.
Yes. You know, what I want to see, if any of you want to hear it, is I want to see the Melrose Complete Streets project. I want it to go forward with our support as it is. I think those elements are important. And I think if you've spoken with Louise on the funding, this is doable for us. I don't think two councils move this project forward, even though it was from visioning, which, as you had told me, Sarah, was kind of pie in the sky elements. But the twenty-sixteen council worked on a project to send, to get funding for that they thought was doable. You heard Mike Hammerkamp say in the work session, they wanted many more things, but they did something that they thought University Heights could do. I think burying the power lines is something people have asked about in the past. We, we, I think we should want to do that when we are able to. And I think this project, we should go ahead and do that. And we don't need to take things out here. We need to, I think we need to support this for the next council. We, you know, we're making all these decisions as if everybody has to abide by what we decide. And I just, you know, I want to see this move forward. I want to see this as a resident move forward. I've been excited about this, and I would not be happy with the council that says, oh, gee, we just can't do it. We've got to do curbs on Cozer or whatever. I think this is important. It's important to the entire city. It's going to give me more benefit than the project in front of my house, I think. And it benefits the larger community. And I think, you know, I want to support it.
So Casey's main rub is if this pushes out, if, if this pushes out other items that may be a priority. Lisa, I'm hearing you say, no, this is a priority, right?
This, this is my priority. These other things will get, they will get done. It's not, and we have been, you know, doing projects. It's not like this is all of a sudden we're going to fix the world. We have been doing those. Things will get done, and I don't know of anything that's a emergency item. And I, like I said, I think this benefits everyone. It creates that entranceway. It does what the comprehensive plan says. People have identified they want in University Heights, and I think it's important.
Do you feel, Casey, like it does the opposite, it doesn't do that? Or do you think like it puts, puts our priorities out of place based on what we came up with?
The, the way I feel about it, Bobby, is that, that I'm not crazy about the project generally, but I have to respect what previous councils have agreed to and what the, what the Sarah's analysis. And so I can go along with it if we take out the, the utility lines. The utility lines only go to George Street. They're not integral to the project. They shouldn't jeopardize our ability to get federal funding. It's just a matter of, when we initially started this project, we thought we were making a thirty-one percent match. Well, a thirty-one percent match is like five hundred thousand dollars. And they kind of baited and switched on us and went to, to a fifty percent match. And we just said, well, we've gone this far, let's go ahead with it. And it seems like those are pretty weak reasons. And as, as Lisa was saying, things just get done. Well, things don't just get done. And Cozer has been the way it is for three decades. And, you know, we still don't have a sidewalk on Highland that goes around that curb. So it's a, you know, it's a blind corner. Kids are walking in the street, and I think that's very important. And I don't think, you know, unless we bond for this and cut some, cut some of the fat out of it, you know, we can do those things later on. We just can't do them now. And those things being burying the utility lines. And I point out that burying the utility lines only to George Street is costing us two hundred and seventy-five thousand. And if we buried the lines for all of, of University Heights, we'd probably be talking in the area of seven hundred and fifty thousand. And I'm ready to do that, but I want to see some, some actual money coming out of OUP before I do. So I just think in terms of just being prudent, I don't think it jeopardizes the project like Lisa does. We disagree diametrically on this, and that doesn't surprise me because we usually do. But-
Please, please don't speak for me. I didn't say it jeopardized the project.
Oh, you didn't? Oh, yeah.
I didn't say it jeopardizes it. Those lines have to be moved. You do realize that. There is a cost associated, and we might as well do what we have identified as something we want to do.
So, so we could, so we could have another one-third finished project in University Heights. And I think that the Melrose project would go on very smoothly without burying those lines. Lisa and I disagree on that.
We, we do disagree. I mean, I just think we should do, do this project.
I hear you.
And do what we say we want to do. And I don't think we need to cut. And I think Leon, Louise could speak to the thirty-one percent, fifty percent match if she would like to. And again, as she said, we don't have to make a decision. And I do think we should follow, you know, we should, we should put this forward, we should support it instead of confusing the next council. Well, two councils and an entire group of people from across the community wanted this. And then this group, they want to pick and cut certain things. To what point and purpose, I don't know. You know, to say that we can't afford it, and I'm hearing from other people that, yes, we can afford it. So.
Well, I'm in favor of tabling the discussion and moving on. It's, it's important to do, but I feel like we don't have a, we don't have to make a decision this very second. And I'm, I'm not a hundred percent certain either way that we can or can't afford it. So.
Well, I guess we should look at ways that we can make it happen, whether it's cash flow or bonding or whatever we've got to do. But that way, we both, it'll be a win-win for, for everybody. But we do have to have cash flow somehow to pay for it. And I think it would be a good idea to bury the underground. But whether we bond for it to make that happen, hey, well, if we can, and that way we get them buried, and we can still move forward and get the thing done and going, I'm all for that, too. But we've got to focus on what can we do instead of what we cannot do.
I kind of think we should just move forward with, with develop, yeah, I agree, Doug. I kind of think we should- I kind of think we should move forward with starting the five-year budget and developing that and let that give us a really better, hopefully a more clear picture about, you know, free cash flow, basically. What do we have that we can use a little bit better? And maybe I can come up with a report or something that, that I can share with everyone and so that we're all a little bit more clear on what we have to spend. And then we can start to look at, okay, if we don't have $10 to spend, and this costs nine, well, do we want to table that project? And do these other three that cost, you know, smaller amounts or not? So I don't know. I think we can make some progress without having to make all the decisions necessarily.
Does anyone else, does anyone else want to move on?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, that's two people.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, we can move on, yeah.
Sarah, you want to move on?
Yes, I'm okay moving on.
Doug, you want to move on?
Yes, ma'am.
You want to move on?
Yes, I do. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry, maybe I'm. Okay, we'll move on for now. And Lisa, you have the e-government report, and you sent a written report around. And Doug mentioned some of the dates for lead back. And you have the detail of what?
Yes, I would like people to go to the website and, and read because we do want them to note that the lead piles should be on the grassy right of way, not in the street, not at the curb, you know, in the curb and not on the sidewalk. Trick or treat information's on there. And I wanted to thank during the meeting Mayor Fromm, Johnson County refugees, Mike Haberkamp, Chief Kelce, and our community volunteers, John Brown, Dan Moore, Pat Yehi, for helping out with Cleanup Day, my favorite event.
Okay.
Anything that involves junk.
Okay, any questions for Lisa? Okay, are there any announcements? Is there any objection to adjournment? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned by unanimous consent. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Louise.
Thank you.
Stay safe. Thank you.